So, in front of you, you'll see the budget. The state budget has not been finalized yet. We anticipate, we are hoping that it will be finalized this weekend. So, we will have additional and better information for you when we meet next week on March the 11th. We are pleased that our health insurance rates have decreased. And they actually decreased, we thought it was going to be 5.9%, but we received word last evening that it's 6.7%. So, even greater decrease than we expected. So, and I know that Buck and Rob, Mr. Smith and Mr. Ballantyne have worked very hard today in order to get you guys some updated information. So, our recommendation is going to be to pass a 6.7% employee share to the employees participating in the health insurance plan. And our recommendation is for the employer's share of the savings to make our health insurance premiums more affordable and more competitive with our neighbor to the north, Frederick County, and our surrounding areas. So, I'm going to allow Buck to, Mr. Smith, to talk about our insurance premiums and what our recommendation is going to be.
Well, I have to admit, last evening, when I received an email from our insurance carrier at around 6 something that evening, saying there were adjustments being made to the insurance, I was a little bit worried of what those adjustments may be. And I actually sent an email back to the insurance people to say, "What do you mean?" So, I know that, because originally it was a 5, 5.7 decrease, it turned out to be, or 5.9, it turned out to be a 6.7.
You need one more?
And behind me, he goes...
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just send some. Just a little relay baton there. Let's first start off with the sheet of our current, our current rates. We'll start off with that. I just want to go over a few things here. We have three plans. Some of this may be extremely familiar to you, and then some, actually, some of this refreshing, it could be real helpful when we get to the next sheet, which has a lot more information, gets a little bit more confusing. But, we have three plans that we currently offer. We have a Key Advantage 250, a 1,000, and an HSA. And the HSA is a Health Savings Account, or a High Deductible Account. And you're going to notice that on each of the plans, our carrier, we go with Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and we're in a very large group, which has been very beneficial for us in the last few years with the local choice. I also believe that the county goes with that, and the town, I'm not sure, no, I'm not sure, but I know that the county also is part of this group. And you're going to notice that there's a gray section through there, and that talks about comprehensive dental. And then it's kind of a tannish type color, as you copy these things on the color printer. It was, believe me, tan at one time, but it looked somewhat tan. It says preventative dental. Our, what those, to distinguish between those two, our, our carrier carries two types of each plan, a comprehensive dental, which is just more coverage, covers more of the things that are not necessarily routine. And then they also offer a preventative dental, and that's just to that. It's more preventative work and those type of things. So, because the preventative covers less, then the rates are a little bit less than the comprehensive. But, that is something that you'll see on all three of the plans, and that's part of our carrier, that our program that we're in, it mirrors the state program, the local choice. And that is a requirement that they have, so you'll see that, you'll see those two things, and I just wanted to distinguish between the, between the two. The 250 is our, our most rich plan, or high, most high coverage plan. The 1,000 is our middle plan, and the HSA is a plan that we have been offering for some time now, for those people who, with their health history and those type of things, that feel more comfortable of paying less and just doing more preventative type, type things. In the gray and in the tan, you'll see whichever plan that people pick, that is the amount, if they were to take that plan, that they, they being the employees, pay. Okay? And that's on a monthly rate. So, let's go to the top 250, just as an example, and look at employee only. The total premium that you get, that is what the insurance company sends back to us as our rates. And then the contribution, that would be the amount of money per month that the school division puts forth to offset the cost of the total premium. And that's how, therefore, you come out within the gray section and the tan section, that is the amount that the employee pays per month for that particular plan. And it works the same principle all the way down through. You'll notice that we offer employee only currently, employee child, employee and spouse, and family. Family currently consists of having an employee and then two other, could be a spouse and a child, or, or children, those type of things. So, so a family plan consists of really three or more people who are on that plan. And all of our plans include dental, vision, dental, vision, and health. Okay? All right. Let's now go to the, to the second sheet, that just has a lot more information on it, but it, it's the sheet that I'll attempt to break down here. Mr. Ballantyne originally put together some information using the same format for us, and with last evening's change, I went back through today, and I put in what a 6.7% decrease across the board would be. There's going to be some new features that are added into this particular proposal. As Mel, Ms. Shepherd mentioned just a few minutes ago, that our objective here with our salaries and our benefits is that we want to be able to compete at the highest level that we can in this region. And realistically, the, the school division of which we lose the largest percentage of people to, which normally, teacher wise, many years is a double-digit number of teachers that we lose to Frederick County. Now, not only do we lose them perhaps because of salary, but I'm sure, well, I'm quite sure we lose them also due to the, the cost of benefits, which would be your health dental and vision insurance. Now, over the last few years, actually, I think overall, as a board, you've done a wonderful job of being able to bring a lot of those rates into line to be more competitive. There is a particular plan that Frederick has, that in passing and in some exit interviews have been mentioned, and that is the plan that Frederick offers, an employee and children, where they do have an employee only, employee and spouse, an employee, child slash children, basically meaning, and family, basically meaning that you don't have to jump to the family plan in order to get more than one child covered. Okay? And so, that becomes extremely beneficial, not only for just people in general, but perhaps even some of your single moms, single dads, employees, who would have more than one, one child. Some additional features in this is with our HSA, our Health Savings Account, in the past, if someone opens that account, each year, we put $500 in as seed money, you could call it seed money, to be able to help to offset some of the deductions that will be required when you use that account. Now, an employee must set up an actual account, a Health Savings Account, and that, the funds used for that can only be used for health, health stuff. You can't, I don't say this jokingly, but I'm just using it as an example, you, you can't go buy computers and TVs, and I think we obviously know that. But, just, just so that, that we know what that money's going in there for, Frederick, Winchester, each put roughly $1,000 in their HSA accounts each year. And so, with our ability, with our reduction and our cost of insurance, we're able to use some of that funding to help enhance some of these plans. So, adding a family, adding a employee and children plan, $1,000 going into the HSA rather than 500, really helps to be able to offset some of those things just outside of salary that we may, that would make us more appealing to be able to, to stay. And as we know, health benefits and those type of things, that's real money at the end of the day. Perhaps it's not money that, if you have that taken out, that you see, but I'm sure you'll see it once you know that it's in there. Let's go through just the 250, 1,000, and the High Deductible Health, Health Plan. The coverage that we have, and I'll just start with the 250, and then it kind of works itself down, so once we explain one box, the rest of the boxes were good. You can see that in the coverage, in the coverage only, we have our employee only, our employee child, our employee spouse, family, dual and spouse and dual family. We have, we have many people who, spouses are within our system. Now, you're going to notice that on that one, that I, a few minutes ago, said we were adding the children plan with that, but that's not in that first plan. But, you will see that in the next two plans. And there's reasons for that. One, you'll notice that on the 1,000, you'll see the enrollees. You're going to notice on the 1,000 plan, that is starting to become year after year, more and more where our people are going. Now, perhaps 233 from 183 is not a huge number at this time. However, a few years ago, that number was in reverse. That 250 was probably the 233, and the 1,000 was probably the 183. So, in that period of time, not only have you seen the separation that you have now, technically, it's really been a double plan, a double difference. That's where we're seeing people go. If we're going to add in a plan such as employee and children, we need to make sure that we put stopgaps in there to be able to financially, be able to control this, because the 250 plan is a plan that is going to be, it's going to be more costly, because it's a higher rich plan. So, therefore, we're looking at taking the 1,000 and the HSA, and that's where we would put in the employee and children plan, because a couple of things we never really know. I can go back, and we have, Mr. Ballantyne and I have went back, and we have looked at possibly, who may, who may be losing, like, a child may be coming off of a plan that's 20, they're 26, they're going on with the health, the healthcare plans and those type of things, and who the employee and, and children plan may affect. But, we don't know for sure 100% where, when it's all said and done, when people sign up, where the dominoes may fall. So, we have to be able to put some funding back, which we have, and you'll notice here at the, at the bottom of this page, it says, "Reserve for increased enrollment," and that would be roughly $146,000 that we would put back. So, as people start to move around and look at some of the rates which have been enhanced in a positive way for them, and a plan that's been added in a positive way for them, it gives us at least the opportunity to have the funding to be able to pay for that, if someone signs up for a plan that they're currently not on, that could be costing us more money. Is that, Mr. Ballantyne?
Yeah, and there are two things I'll add. One is, you talked about why, the reasons why we didn't put that tier of employee children on the Key Advantage 250. We looked at those folks that are currently enrolled in our insurance, and who we think would be eligible to move from their currently paying the family plan to this employee and children plan, and every one of them, the vast majority are on the Key Advantage 1,000, and there may be one that's on the High Deductible Health Plan, but none of those people that are currently enrolled and would be eligible to take advantage of that savings by moving to that tier, none of those are on the Key Advantage 250. So, it wouldn't be taking anything away from anybody that's currently enrolled. And just as another footnote, the $146,000 seems like a lot of money, and it is, but if we had seven people go, one to the employee spouse, excuse me, the employee children plan, that currently aren't enrolled, and it may draw that many, seven, seven enrollees would eat up $146,000. It's just on, it almost eat it up. It's just under $20,000 a year that would be paid towards their health insurance, and this would, you know, that would, seven people would eat it up. So, it, you know, it's, but we never know, from one year to the next, we never know what enrollment is going to be. We can only base it on what it is today, and, and this year, with making these several tiers at least that much more attractive, we can only suspect that there will be more, more folks enrolled. Quite honestly, I think that enrollment has shrunk a little bit over the last couple years, for whatever reasons.
Well, there's probably a few reasons. We've hired quite a few people right out of college, there, a lot of those guys and gals are still on their parents' terms.
Stayed on their parents' terms until they're 26.
And I have a daughter and a son who falls in that same boat. So, I'd like to just go through, look at some of the rates, and just point out some things that I think are quite impressive. If we start at the top box, the 250, up there, what we really did is that we applied the 6.7% decrease to all the rates from last year. So, that top box, everyone's going to receive a 6.7% decrease from the previous year. When you go into the Key Advantage 1,000, in the same effect in the HSA, but we'll focus on the 1,000 here, and we can just apply those same principles to the bottom box. We basically, we looked at Frederick County, looked at our surrounding areas, and basically, we try to mirror the places of where we're losing people, because it just, it gets to the point, if you just can't compete with them with certain things, you're just going to lose to them. And not surprisingly, because we've looked at this, the areas that we were always strong were the employee only rates and the employee spouse rates. The places where we fell short were the employee child rates and the family rates. So, we've enhanced those two, and then we've added the children part in there as well. So, you can look at your, your two sheets, and you can see where in the, this current year, how much like employee child for the Key Advantage 1,000 was 328, and this upcoming year, it would be 192. You know, you take the difference between those and times it by 12, 12 months out of the year, and it becomes a significant amount of money. But, it even becomes on some of these other plans, more significant, more impactful, more ways for people to say, "Hey, I'm going to stay." Employee spouse, as I mentioned before, there, we just took the 6.7% and we decreased it, because we're competitive in that area. And here with the employee and children, we, we made that the same as employee and child. Now, if you think about that, that is someone coming off of a family plan, if they had that before, at 800, look at, you can look at the current rates, 840-some-plus dollars. Minus that amount of 192, then times that by 12, that's significant. You know, that, that's, that's significant. But, it's significant in the fact that if I'm judging whether I want to be somewhere or somewhere else, if somewhere else has that, it's just another check in a box to make me want to, to want to be there. Culture's important. There's lots of other things that are important of why people stay, why people go, why people do certain things. But, but I want to be able to narrow down those boxes, and, and narrow down those, and I think that plan itself, the employee children, will be extremely helpful for people on, you know, a lot of salaries within the, the school division. The family plan itself, another area where, over the years, we've struggled, $841 if we go down to 673. So, you know, 100-and-some-plus dollars there, times 12, also with increase of salaries and those types of things, all these things together can be very impactful. Same situation down below, same way that we did it up top, we just did it for the Health Savings Account. And over on the preventative side, the same identical, same identical thing. And I just wanted to point those few things out, because I felt those were, those are moving in a very strong direction to be able to compete regionally with, with other divisions. Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield has always been very good insurance.
What are the deductibles for these plans? Is it 250, 1,000, and then what's the high?
The high deductible is actually, it's, it's high, it's, no, it's 2850. You know, and Frederick's is 1750, I want to say. So, we felt like with 2850, that we would need to, to up the seed money somewhat to make that also attractive.
But, even with their lower deductible, they're still putting 1,000 a year, plugging into the account, so it's, you know, it's not like we're sort of going overboard on it.
Right, right.
But, I think that's the only high deductible plan that Local Choice offers with that deductible. I don't think there's an option for us to go with a plan that has a lower deductible. I think.
You're right.
And the plan here itself can all, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ballantyne, the plan itself here, this, this strategy is all doable within the money that we have allotted for health insurance.
In this current budget.
In this current budget, yes, in this current budget. With the decrease, and a decrease in the previous year, and then the year before that, a large increase, and then the other two years before that, a decrease, the average is, is about 6.5% increase a year, is what you see insurance-wise. That's a good, that's a good year. So, we've, you know, we've, we've been four, one year, maybe we had to make up for it, but we just, well, we had a tough year.
You know, that one year, we paid for the three years, the three-year period.
But, really, in reality, that one year was a very tough year. And what I mean by that is that we actually had a handful of deaths of employees, and so that's, that's always impactful as well, and that we just had a lot of, large claims that year, and...
This, this 29, and here, is that pretty much young and new teachers that could afford to handle the high deductible?
I'm not, I'm not really, I mean, I can, I can identify, I don't know off the top of my head who are, what group they fall in, but a lot of times, most likely, they are, but not always. Percentages, percent-wise, most likely, but I do know that we have some people on there who are more seasoned and those type of things, and fortunately, over the years, they have experienced very good health. And when we get into health insurance and, and in our office and those type of things, we, we really just recommend and encourage the people to, to almost do a self-evaluation of where they are health-wise, as far as which plan that they would need to go into and those type of things, because starting to make recommendations for Mr. Williams and Mr. Hirsch and those type of things, and then all of a sudden, in December, Mr. Williams has this situation, "Well, you recommended this for me." Well, it really has to be a decision that is, if you're taking it out on yourself, self-evaluation, or if you're taking it out on your family, it has to be a family evaluation.
Yeah, just looking down the list, they're, on the high deductible, they're not all new, new hires that we've hired in the last five years or so, they're, it's a mix of both ones. Of course, to me, they all were young, so...
Funny how that changes.
This one, where you're looking at it, probably.
So, if you will look at the sheet that Mr. Smith just spoke about, the very bottom number says $215,689. That is the money that we have in excess of what has been budgeted, and if you will look at this page right here, the second page of this, that actually shows the reduction in health insurance rates, in red down towards the bottom. But, I'll, I'll allow Mr. Ballantyne an opportunity to walk us through this proposed budget.
Well, this, this is very similar to what you saw the last time we talked. It takes our projected revenue, which is based on the governor's budget, and we'll talk about the other two, sort of competing budgets in a moment, and it takes everything level funded from this year, taking the positions that we have and the salaries that the people are currently in it, and the benefits, which would include the health insurance at the level that it's funded at this current year. And we had $2,957,651 of quote-unquote "new" money to work with from the state, and also savings we had realized through staff turnover this current year. And then the items are there. I don't think anything's changed coming down the page. We talked about fully implementing the teacher, instructional assistant, and nurses' scales, and then giving everyone else a 1% cost of living adjustment plus a step increase. Our VRS rate did go up just under 1%, so that added some costs, and that is included in there. And then the different things that we talked about last time, the only difference is, we can actually show that $215,000 savings in health insurance, even after you do those things we talked about, to make our plans more competitive with our neighbor to the north. And that reduces the deficit, if you want to call it that, from the 870-some thousand that it was, down to 656,000. And, and that's the difference between what we would be able to do with no change in our local funding, and, and what we would like to do here in these items that are, that are needed in the budget. If you go back to the first page, I talked about the competing budgets. We based what you just looked at now on the governor's proposed budget. His budget did not include any compensation supplement or incentive, any incentive to give employees a salary increase in fiscal year '21. His did, going out in the second year of the biennium, include a 3% increase. If the House has passed their budget, and, and the Conferes are working on it and the Senate budget, maybe as we speak this evening, so the House budget had a 2% compensation supplement for fiscal year '21, next budget year, the one we're working on now, and then 2% for the following year, so it would be 4% over the two-year period. Now, the thing is, when the state funds a salary incentive, they fund their fair share based on our composite index. So, there is a local requirement to do it, plus, as we've mentioned, they fund it based on the standards of quality positions. We, along with every other school division in the state, have more positions than the standards of quality require us to have. So, it's, it's not, you know, that 2% state doesn't mean that they're going to pay for it all by any means. It ends up being maybe 50% of it, or something like that, of the cost typically. The Senate bill, and this is a little bit interesting, has a 3% one-time bonus on December 1st of 2020 that would be given to employees, and then they go along with a 4% compensation supplement, something that would carry forward. That's interesting in a way, and I don't, what I don't know yet, and if that ends up being what we end up being dealt, I don't know if the salaried... being what we end up being dealt, I don't know if the salary initiatives that we have would give everyone at least an average 3% increase. So in doing that, would that meet their requirement of this one-time bonus? And, you know, also, maybe would that meet our employees' expectation that, you know, the states say we're supposed to get a 3% bonus in December, everybody else is getting one. Yes, we got a raise, that's right back in July, but, you know, why didn't we get the bonus? So we'll see how that works out. My hope is maybe that they'll come up with something where they'll give us money, 2% or 3% or something like that, that we can give as a salary for employees this year, but also one that they will be able to have in future years. The General Assembly's set to adjourn on Saturday, I think, the 7th, and hopefully, we'll, I haven't heard anything, I don't know if anybody else has read or heard anything.
Dr. Brown at the Board of Health profession said that most, if any wrangling, that he felt like the budget, particularly the education budget, was just about completed, and that if there was any wrangling, it was going to be about healthcare issues and some other things like that. They expect it to be out.
That would be very good. It'd be very helpful to everyone to know where they stand and allow us and our governing body to be able to move forward and, and do their jobs, and that's good.
Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ballantyne, sorry. If, if the state says 2%, then we use the CPI and also, the numbers change. We have to match that to equal the 2%. If we don't match it, do we still get the state funding?
We don't.
I didn't think it did.
No. And, and some, one year, it was done on a sliding scale, and I forget the number, but if they said you had to do 4%, if you did 2%, you got half of it, or something like that. The way I've read these, in particular, the House one, you would need, we would need to give the 2% this year for the entire year. Sometimes they'll do it because they don't have the funding to, to fund their fair share. They'll say, well, you, you can either give a 2% for half of the year, or a 1% at the beginning of the year, and, and those type of things. I haven't seen any of that type, where I hope it's just something straightforward. If it's going to be 2%, they say it's 2% for the whole year, and, and we can, can move forward. Typically, what we have to do, the superintendent has to then sign a certification that we gave employees a 2% salary increase, if that's what it is. And once we do that, then they begin sending their funding for their fair share, match it.
But we have to match, or we get nothing?
Oh, we have to, yeah. But what they give us, we'll not do it, and if we don't do it, we don't get it. It's, it's a incentive program.
So just to wrap this conversation up, and then if you guys have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. At our next meeting, which will be March the 11th at 5:00 down at the School Board Office, we will come with a recommendation. Hopefully, we will have a file of the state budget, which will have more information on maybe priorities. But if you have any preference on priorities, my top priority is to fully implement the salary skills that we have listed there, and then buses and textbooks. If there are any other order you would like to see other things, we'd be happy to entertain that and, and, or if you would like the order to change, we'd be happy to hear that. Any questions for Mr. Smith, or Mr. Ballantyne, and myself, on anything that you've heard or concerns?
I have none.
Very nice presentation.
If you have any between now and then, you know, you know our phone number, or you know where we live.
Y'all want to adjourn from over here, you want to go back out. Any other business before the board? Ron, Ben, Hurst, meeting adjourned.